Good afternoon, Chatham. Welcome to the May 13, 2025, meeting of the Chatham Select Board. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the Chair. Seeing so no such notification, I'll proceed pursuant to Governor Healey's March 28, 2025, signing of Chapter Two of the Acts of 2025, extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until June 30, 2027. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410, conference ID 203386491, pound sign, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel 1072, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. First order of business here is to establish a quorum. Mr. Nick Castro.
Present.
Mr. Shell says present. Ms. Davis.
Present.
And Mr. Dykens.
Present.
And Mr. Metters.
Present.
We are now going to go into executive session, and I will invite a motion to establish that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move that the Select Board go into executive session under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21, parentheses, six, close parentheses, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, a real property, at 438 George Ryder Road, and that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, whom the Chair so declares, with return to open session.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nick Castro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis, Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
So...
All right, we're back in session from the executive session. I'll just quickly review the agenda. We have two sets of minutes. We have public announcements and agenda item requests. We have a report from the monthly report from Mr. Failey on wells, PFAS, and drinking water testing, et cetera. And then we have public comments on the business agenda. The business agenda consists of two large items, the first being Declaration of June as Historic Chatham Month proclamation, the second being follow-up discussion and action items from the annual town meeting. And we have eight items there. I will start with minutes, the May 6 minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments or corrections? If not, Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. And Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Forgive me.
Yeah, that's okay.
And Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
The minutes from April 29.
Move approval of the minutes for April 29, 2025.
Second.
Any comments or questions or corrections? Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
And Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
And Mr. Matters.
Aye.
We are going now to public announcements and agenda item requests. I'll start with the board. Anything, yes, sir, Mr. Dyken.
My travels of late, just a couple requests and questions. There's been a few folks asking about, and Jill, don't kill me, about opening the dump or the transfer station, or should say, on Wednesdays. Maybe if it's seasonal even, but just it's been out there more than once. I mean, three, or four, or five times folks have mentioned. So that's number one. The other true agenda item request is a revisitation of the notion of Chatham's as a Woods Hole East, partnering back with, and this is pre-COVID. I think Shereen and Dean and Stephen Daniel and others were working on this initiative. And it's still one of interest, I think. It would be really valuable for the town from employment, education, attraction, you know, just the whole bit. I think it would be a real plus. So I, and I don't know what, I have no suggestion about how we formulate that, but I think it would really be neat to rekindle it. So I'm going to make that a formal agenda item request.
Yeah, go ahead.
Respond a little bit if you want. But.
I mean.
I'll just say, something that I've had conversation with Jill about it, as well as briefly with Mr. Collinane, who, and he asked me about it a while back. So I would hope we could get moving on that again. And I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm extremely interested in it. I think it's really, really interesting.
And Shereen is too.
Shereen is too, yeah.
So I just have one, again, in my travels, I've had some fairly insistent questions about certain aspects of the beach at the end of Forest Beach Road. I'm not going to go into the details. I think that is something that can come up with the, both DPW and perhaps Parks and Rec, but it relates to the condition of certain items of infrastructure, the, some of the placement of stones at the jetty, the bicycle rack, the condition of the bicycle rack, et cetera, et cetera. And I just think we ought to put that on the agenda and take that up with the relevant members of the staff. Ms. Latin, please.
I'm Karen Latin, and I am the Chair of Conservation Commission. And as you all know, we had a wonderful article pass on Saturday that allows our associate members in, at certain times, to have the ability to vote. And I know this was only the first step, and the state still has to approve it. But right now, we don't have associate members. And I've come before you guys, before pleading that if you can do anything to assist us, we are, we haven't had associate members in a couple of years. And it's a one-year commitment. We also, everybody says it's a lot of work to be on conservation. I think the work has gotten a bit easier because we don't have as many properties in front of us at all times. And we are trying something, and from tomorrow, we'll vote to approve this, but we are going to try and go to two meetings a month through September. We've figured out a way to be able to do that and make it work. And so we think that that also may help people to be interested. And I'm hoping maybe some people are watching and listening in some way and might all of a sudden have an interest. It's such an important part of our town, and we need help. We, as commissioners, have gone all over, talked to all sorts of people, trying to get anybody we can. And so far, we haven't had anybody step in, and we could use that help. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And as you perhaps know, we have the article that you referred to on the agenda this evening, and that, and we'll be acting on that this evening.
Yes, I'm going to go home and watch the rest of the thing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I am going to, I'm very happy that it's on your agenda today. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Anybody else in the room? Anybody online?
No.
Okay, Mr. Failey.
I'm sorry, my hand was up and then it went down. I apologize.
Ms. Gibbs.
Thank you. Yes, first of all, this is about the last item on the agenda that says for the town meeting, citizen petitions. In the packet, there's a staff memo for tonight regarding petition articles 49 to 59, stating it's the board's prerogative to discuss any of these articles, end town meeting action, provide direction to town manager and staff on the next steps, and take any action. I'm requesting that the public be allowed to comment during each of those petition articles, as we have no idea which ones may or may not be discussed, or what action you may take, and therefore really no way to comment ahead of time, if that's okay.
Granted.
Thank you. And then I have an agenda item request, to discuss the procedure for select board members voting on articles which benefit them personally. In addition to state ethics law, Section 1-8 of the Town Charter states in part, elected and appointed officials shall not use their office, positions to secure special consideration, treatment, advantage, privilege to themselves, or to any other person beyond that which is available to every person. Mr. Dyken's voted for the grinder pump policy and warrant Article 18 under the wastewater project continuation, which included grinder pump financing, participating in all the discussions and votes. According to the DPW, his residence has been on the list since before August 30th of 2024, to receive a grinder pump and money for its installation, costs that are not available to every person, only those on low pressure who need pumps. Others have recused themselves from discussion and voting on issues for far less. The immediate remedy would be to decline to accept the funds, or that they, any forthcoming funds that may come down the road. I'm requesting an agenda item with public discussion to instill greater trust within the community, including the requirement for full disclosure and transparency of elected officials regarding conflicts or appearance of conflicts, and the potential impact on town meeting votes as a result.
Noted, thank you. Mr. Failey?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Rob Failey, Director of Public Works. I would go through the Chatham Wells drinking water testing update for April of 2025. So the wells have been pumping last month from three to seven hours per day, and we did not hit the low-level alarm. As far as Wells 5 and 8, for the PFAS treatment facility, it's all about brickwork. It's been the primary focus of the past month and probably the first half of May. Towards the end of May, we'll start on the roof. That's probably a several-month project to do that as well. So things are moving along nicely, though.
Can I ask you a question? I drove by this morning, I mean, this afternoon on the way over here, and, you know, those, the facilities, those things look huge. Are they going to be really loud when they operate? I mean, it's kind of like, they're not? They're very quiet?
No, it's pretty much water filtering through.
Okay, there's no, like?
From outside the building, you shouldn't hear anything.
How about inside for workers and things like that?
It is separate from, like, the workspace.
Yep.
So I think Morton Road, I don't think there's a hearing protection requirement. There'll be probably some noise, but I don't think it'll be above a certain decibel level that you'd need, like, hearing protection.
They're just, they're just fascinating.
Yeah, they almost look like aliens when you're standing there.
I know, they're very cool. Thanks, Rob.
You're welcome. So Mill Pond Wells 10 and 11, we finally, we got our title searched back. Everything was good, and we sent it back to the Office of Environmental Affairs yesterday. So now waiting for their review, and hopefully there are no more edits, and is just waiting for signatures at this point. So I have not heard back from them yet. As far as water sampling, all our bacteria samples were good. The third bullet there, you'll notice, it says quarterly PFAS six samples were taken from Mill Hill Treatment Plant, and well four showing an increase from previous results. I just wanted to clarify, well four is non-detect, and the Mill Hill Treatment Plant is slightly elevated, but it's still below the mass, the EPA proposed limits of four parts per trillion. We're still lower than that. So it was nothing too concerning, but it's something we're definitely keeping an eye on. Station maintenance, ongoing. System maintenance, the flushing program has been completed, and Veolia employees put out the mandatory water restriction signs to notify the public that started on May 1st. And we'll jump right into the statistics. So here's our April 24 gross pumping versus April 25. Some minor fluctuations, we're slightly lower than last year by 3.9%, but we are tracking pretty, pretty close. You'll see a couple of days were over 100% from last year, but I think it's just the timing. Like, April 21st was Easter Monday, Patriots' Day, so there were probably a lot of people at home possibly using water. You know, some of these just could be weather fluctuations, like a nice spring day versus a cooler day, or a weekend day. Nothing, nothing too out of the ordinary, in my opinion. Here's the pumping comparison graph, showing the same information, where April 2025 is in the pink, and April last year is in the blue, just showing some of those daily fluctuations. Same information in a bar chart. And here's our monthly pumpage report, showing the level of effort for each well for each day. You can see some wells were off periodically just for routine maintenance. Well floor, we're planning starting that up by Memorial Day. We've already done our PFAS samples. We're going to be doing some flushing in the next week or so, and then if everything comes out good for our testing, we'll have that started up before Memorial Day. Here is our pumping graph. Again, just showing the level of effort for each well. South Chatham is still our stronghold. Here's our year-to-date pumping. Again, we're about 3 million gallons, or 3 and 1/2 million gallons lower than this time last year. Hopefully, with the, with the water restrictions in place, that gap will continue to grow. But time will tell, we'll see. Any questions so far? Okay. Again, pumping graph and a bar chart. Nothing unusual there. This is a new chart I wanted to share, just to show, because we are in water restrictions. Wanted to show how many gallons we used in flushing and blow-offs. You can see it's pretty substantial, but it's still a reduced effort from what we usually put forward. So 3.9 million gallons last month, it probably would have been closer to five, or over five, if we had done our normal flushing routine.
Does that continue throughout the year, or does it decrease?
No, we're done now at this point. I think there was a week in May where we were still flushing, but we're completed now at this point.
Okay.
So we conducted an open house on May 3rd, where we conducted tours of the Water Pollution Control Facility and the Morton Road Treatment Plant as part of our annual outreach. Here's a picture of a Veolia employee with a couple of guests, and it was pretty well-attended. People asked a lot of really good questions. Jill was there, so thank you for that. And so here's our observation well for Chatham. Now, we talked about this a little bit with our drought status, and so we're still climbing, which is really good, because you can see in all the previous years, we've already started our seasonal decline. We are higher than 2021. We can only hope that we still continue to climb, but I can't imagine we'd be another week or two before we start to see a seasonal decline. That would probably be a best-case scenario. We're still monitoring it. Towards the end of this report, we'll discuss current drought conditions. As Brewster, it seems a little bit more bleak. Again, all previous years, they've already started the seasonal decline. We are still recharging, so that's a good sign, but we still have a long way to go before we're, you know, out of the danger zone. Here's our five-year pumping comparison for the month of April. 132 hours of pumping, and for 20, almost 21 million gallons, pretty much right on average. Our pumping hours are lower, which is good, because I think we have so many wells that are contributing right now.
Do you have a question, Jeff?
I have two. I have two questions. Timing for getting our treatment plan up and running on old, you know, on Training Field. When it's done, it turns it on, is it going to be the fall? You think it's?
It'll be over the winter sometime.
Over the winter, okay.
Yep.
Should we get permission from the state with a clear title? Can Tango write on?
We don't have, we don't have any restrictions there. We own all the land free and clear.
Okay, no, I know, but it's not, it's not bringing water yet.
No, no, right.
So, so when we get the title cleared, we're going to be able to pump water?
Oh, for Wells 10 and 11?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, for well 10, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry, I thought you, I thought you said.
So there's, there may be a potential of some incremental supply, if you will, over the summer.
Correct. Well, we are pumping from well 11 already. It would only be 10 that would be added to it.
Yep, good, okay, thank you.
And we are, again, as I discussed previous months, we are seeing some PFAS creep into well 10, so we've got to take that into consideration as well. It may not be a full pumpage, we may have to reduce the flow a little bit to keep those levels down.
Okay. All right, I mean, that's good to know.
Any part will help, though.
Yep.
And this is the latest Massachusetts drought status. So the Massachusetts Drought Task Force met on the afternoon of May 7th. Majority of Massachusetts has seen some level of improvement, just not on the Cape. Even the islands crept up one level. We're still in a significant drought. The determination was based on precipitation through the end of April. We are trending for precipitation, we're trending towards normal, but it's the rainfall deficit over the past six months that it's really difficult to climb out of that deficit. So on May 1st, we enacted the mandatory water restrictions, and those are still in effect. The Water and Sewer Advisory Committee met yesterday. They recommend holding off on any changes to the current conservation restrictions until the Massachusetts Drought Task Force meets again, and that's planned for June 9th. So we called a meeting for the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee on June 10th. I believe there's a select board meeting that night, so we can, as soon as we hear a decision from the drought task force, we can make a recommendation from the advisory committee, and then bring that to the select board that evening, if that works.
Any other questions?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So I understand that Mr. Messina will replace Angela Bukar with the next item, which is, oh, thank you, thank you, sorry. Public comments on the business agenda. Bear with me one minute, Frank, sorry. With exception of the last two items that Ms. Gibbs requested comment alongside of the board. I don't see any. Ms. Gibbs?
Sorry, I did it again. Yes, thank you. I only have one general public comment about town meeting. Moving forward, I would ask the town meeting not be held on Mother's Day weekend. Of all 15 towns on the Cape, only Chatham had a town meeting on Mother's Day weekend. Because of it, Chatham's FY '26 total budget appropriations of 110 million, which was up 38.5% over the last year, and with serious issues facing Chatham, it was consequently decided by only 550 people. That's only 9%. That's only nine percent of Chatham's registered voters. Some articles were only approved or had voters in the numbers of around three fifty. Lots of people in Chatham have mothers and daughters out of town that they'd like to be with, and I don't think anyone should have to choose between family and the future of Chatham. So I would hope that a different date could be picked next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. All right, Mr. Messina, sorry for the delay. Go ahead.
No problem. Hi, Frank Messina, I'm chairman of the Historical Commission, but I guess I'm here actually as a member, a founding member of the group called Historic Chatham. And we have asked that the selectmen with Jill have a proclamation. Do you folks read it?
I'm sorry?
Do you folks read the proclamation?
We do.
No, I'll read it.
Oh, please do.
Okay, thank you. A couple of whereas's. Whereas the town of Chatham was incorporated on June eleventh seventeen twelve, following a long history of settlement by the Native American Monomoyes and the arrival of English colonists in sixteen fifty-six. And whereas the Historic Chatham Group was established on the town's three-hundredth anniversary in two thousand twelve as a way to promote local history for the purpose of instilling community pride, promoting heritage tourism, and celebrating our town past. And whereas Historic Chatham recognizes June as Chatham History Month and sponsors events, programs around the town of Chatham to instill awareness and promote the historic assets in Chatham. And whereas Chatham History Month can raise awareness of the local historically significant buildings, landmarks, people, and events to Chatham residents and visitors alike. And whereas Chatham History Month can be a community, can be a community discussion inviting residents and visitors to explore the deep history of Chatham. Now therefore I, Jill Goldsmith, okay, town manager of Chatham along with the select board, do hereby proclaim the month of June as History Month in the town of Chatham and call upon our residents and visitors to recognize and participate in this special observance passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Frank, too. We did a little editing on the last "therefore," so in the packet, I'll read it if you don't mind. It says, "Now therefore the select board hereby proclaims the month of June as History Month in the town of Chatham and call upon our residents and visitors to recognize and participate in this special observance." They are the ones typically doing the proclamations. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Shereen.
Mr. Chair, I move to proclaim the month of June as History Month in Chatham, Massachusetts.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one question for Frank. It says that you are updating your website with the events. Does the chamber have on their website as well?
Yes, I was, thank you very much. That was a great toss, thank you. I was going to say, the group Historic Chatham was established, as it says in the warrant in the proclamation, in seventeen, excuse me, in two thousand twelve during our town's terceantenary, I love that word, our three-hundredth anniversary. And, you know, there was a group formed during the three-hundredth anniversary with Ron Nickerson and John King, names that you could know. And I was part of this group, which every, every organization in Chatham participated. And we all, you know, did a lot of things during the Chatham's three-hundredth anniversary. And during, toward the end of the three-hundredth anniversary, some of us got together and said, you know, we should kind of stay together. And the old military expression, cooperate and graduate, you know, that if we work together and help instill the appreciation of Chatham's history, you know, we could probably, you know, help the, help the town. Hate to say it's like we're more than sharks, that Chatham history. So the group was formed, we continue. We've been having something called History Weekend, but quite honestly, the number of events that happened in the spring at each of the venues, you know, has, has increased dramatically. And though we're going to do Chatham History Month, and if the group, the website, unfortunately, I should have given something to our IT folks. If you go on your cellphone and ask for Historic Chatham and you look at the beautiful website we have, which was just updated by us, there's a list and show every, every activity which is going to be happening in Chatham. And just quickly, the groups who, who consist of, you know, who are we Historic Chatham? Well, we're nine venues and historic sites. The Historical Society, the Atwood, the Chatham Lighthouse, the Coast Guard Station, the Marconi RCA Museum, the Chatham Railroad Museum, the Eldridge Public Library, oh, boy, he's too much, the Godfrey Windmill, and the Railroad Museum, and the Mayo House, and last but not least, the Monomoye Lighthouse, way at the end of Chatham, which the Wildlife Refuge. So we all, we're all part of that. We meet monthly and we decide, make sure our events do not conflict with one another. And in the last year or two, with Angela Bukar and who couldn't make it today, a family matter, the chamber is involved now more actively in helping us promote. Quite honestly, the chamber has good at PR and things like this, you know, that we're not. And so there's a lot of things happening in that month and a lot of organizations, some of them are giving free entry, or the windmill, of course, is free, but you're welcome. We're going to be hopefully grinding corn and there's a lot of, a lot of activities. Just quickly aside, I know I've given this speech before, you know, Chatham has, you know, three historic districts, the Old Village, the Marconi RCA, and the new South Chatham Village Historic District, as well as the Historic District, the HBDC. And in addition, we have, I think, twenty-one or twenty-five individual properties or sites which are listed on the National Register. The Historical Commission is waiting any day now to hear from Mass Historic on our application to make the Nickerson Family Homestead, you know, as a National Register site. This was, this was in cooperation with the Historical Society. And as noted in our, in our proclamation, it's not only a Nickerson site, it's also the, the Monomoye homeland, you know, there's a lot going on. You can't put a spoon into Chatham's dirt without finding some Indian artifact and, and so we're trying to recognize that. So, long story short, that's who we are and we appreciate the, the help and, and cooperation of the town in making us have an event. We're not selling t-shirts, but we, we have a lot of, a lot of activity going on. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. There's, any other questions? There's a motion on the table that's been seconded, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All good. Okay. All right, we're going to the annual town meeting, follow-up discussion and action items, consider filing a special legislation following approval of two thousand twenty-five ATM actions. Article forty-four, I, I don't know how you want to proceed with this. My, my understanding is that we're at a mechanical stage of simply refiling these, but if you have a comment, Dean, please do.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, before we get into the individual articles, since the lead topic in the heading is a follow-up discussion on town meeting, I, I did have something generally I wanted to say about town meeting, and I don't know if others do as well, but I wanted to see if.
Please do. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the role of town council, because there was a lot of discussion about that in some of the comments. And I want to sort of echo something that I've said at this panel before, and I think you as well. And I think it's important for the public to understand, Chatham is a municipal corporation. The select board engages an attorney or law firm to function as town council. The role of town council is not just to prepare documents or review documents, but to give us advice. That advice is not necessarily dispositive on an issue, but is certainly authoritative. And to me, as a select board member, it's much more important than advice that's thrown around or presented by third parties. And I speak with some experience in this because I served as town, as city solicitor for a significant city in this Commonwealth. I also served as in-house counsel for a significant nonprofit corporation. And I think it's important for people to understand that even though the executive authority in, in these organizations, and in this case, the town, the select board engages the, the town council, that council gives advice to the entire corporation, to the entire town of Chatham as an organization. And I certainly, in ten years on this board, I have on multiple occasions asked for the opinion of town council on issues that come before us, before we have to vote on them, including recommendations to town meeting. I've asked for the opinion of town council because I want to be informed. If, if there's an issue that, if there is an, an item that presents a legal issue, I want to know what our attorney has to say about it. And I think it's important for town meeting to know that information as well. So I do take some offense at comments that suggest that we should just ignore the, the opinion of town council, and I think it's very foolish to take that position. I haven't always agreed with the opinions of town council, but, you know, I'm not the town council. And I just really wanted to get that out there. The other comment I want to make generally because it's not one of the refiles on, on a couple of specific items. I really was thrilled with the Center for Active Living and the result that occurred. It was a phenomenal vote, and I want to thank the town meeting voters, and I want to thank our town manager, who took a strong leadership position in helping bring this to the finish line with her staff, with a very capable staff, Leah and Terry, and the, and the Council on Aging Board, and the support that was given by members of the Friends of the Council on Aging, and the Finance Committee, and my colleagues on this board of, the select board. I think that was really important. The article on the airport was one, I guess it was a million dollars that.
The improvement plan?
The improvement plan, yes, thank you. I think it's unfortunate that that did not pass. A lot of that was safety-related, and I think, you know, we're going to have to, going forward, try to come up with a way to help get more support for things like that from the community. And I, I guess that's, and I want to thank the chief of police for, for, for stepping forward on Saturday to explain, clarify the article on the speed signs. So I just really wanted to get those points across. I appreciate that. I know we're going to talk about these other articles going forward, but thank you.
Thank you, Shereen.
Just briefly, there was a couple of things, and one of them was the date of our town meeting. I don't know what we were thinking in, in, in scheduling it, the weekend of Mother's Day. Perhaps none of us looked at what was conflicting in the calendar on that date. I did hear from many business leaders in town that it was not a, a good date, and no, it wasn't. I mean, it was a weekend that should have been reserved for other matters. I was really disappointed in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. I think the devil was in the details as far as, I think the plan was great, perhaps the messaging was a little too detailed. I think maybe, I'm hoping that we can see it again at some point. I think it was really good. As far as some of the speed sign issues, the safety issues, it was interesting to hear from folks who are getting up and have gotten up at, at our meetings here, discussing some of the different areas in town that they're completely concerned about safety matters and, and had some, some problems with the, some of the signage and things like that. I think, I'm not ready to make an agenda item request, but I think maybe we need to discuss some of the neighborhoods and, and their, especially the ones that are walked a lot and have a lot of people diversing them, whether we should be thinking about other safety measures in that respect. But other than that, I think it was a well, well-done town meeting. I think we got a lot done, right? And I'm, you know, I, I was really, I was really pleased with a lot of the outcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jeff?
My two cents. Yeah, I was thrilled with the Monomoye Regional School support. It was resounding as it was in Harwich as well. I think that sends a clear message to parents and students alike in the rest of the community that we're going to support the, support our regional school system. Turnout could have been better, I think. I got complaints about Saturday, never mind Mother's Day weekend, but Saturday versus Monday night, I got complaints about that. I thought Thad Eldridge was incredible. I mean, he got a round of applause and he's very clear and really I support, you know, participation like that at our town meeting. Was disappointed in West Chatham Neighborhood Center, I wish that had passed as well. Very pleased with CFAL and Transfer Station getting the, the support it did. And also echo the disappointment in Article twenty-six. In my mind, it's an absolute no-brainer to pay for fifty-nine thousand dollars for a million-dollar improvement is, is, seems like a pretty good deal to me. But all in all, I thought it was a very successful town meeting. We got an awful lot done. Wasn't perfect from my perspective, but I'll tell you right now, I think we, we got an awful lot done and I was very pleased with town meeting this year. I wish the turnout had been better, and I think it could be perhaps, should we have it on, not on a Saturday.
Corey?
Well, to continue that conversation, that was the, the most frequent comment I got after town meeting was, was Saturday. It was Mother's Day. But then you think about it, if we had it on Monday and we had a six-hour meeting, we probably wouldn't have had it in one evening. We would have put it, rolled over in two evenings. So we, we're never going to come up with a perfect formulation of that, but I do think we can, you know, keep striving to come up with a better plan. Out of curiosity, but I was actually asked this, is rolling back town meeting even an option, like late April, early, you know, mid-April, would that even be an option mechanically? Something we'd have to obviously discuss about, but it does alleviate, at least from the conversations that I've had, you know, the Saturday morning business pickup isn't quite happening quite yet. Some of the families do have all the sports programs, that's not quite happening yet. It may not be the end-all solution, but it's something I think it's worth exploring to see, would, if you rolled it back a little bit earlier, would that make more sense? So just putting it out there for discussion purposes, you know, I think we had a good, good town meeting. I wish the turnout was larger and was more representative, but, you know, that's just the system we have. Thrilled the Transfer Station passed, I've always been very supportive of that facility. And, you know, I appreciate those people who stayed the six hours and, you know, stayed the entire six hours, because I know that some people, you know, respectfully, they come, they come for one or two articles or four articles, but those who stuck it out, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, mostly I agree with everything I've heard here from, from you folks. I, I, and I do want to say, you know, it's easy to be disappointed. I am disappointed by the, the, some of the results specifically. I, I think top of my list would be the, the neighborhood zoning proposal from the Planning Board. That was, you know, depending on how you count, that was a five-year project. It had, I mean, the, the blood splat and tears that went into that over that period of time was untold. And I, I, I think, you know, we can quarrel with the presentation perhaps, but that is a really, really important initiative for the town of Chatham and for that neighborhood. And I, I just think it, it was, I'll just say it was very disappointing. There are other things that didn't happen that, you know, would have been good if they could have gone the other way, but I do want to emphasize that we did accomplish a tremendous amount, and, and I think that's, that's what we really ought to take away from it. I want to come back, however, to the issue of, of turnout. Yes, this was not the ideal weekend, that's probably an understatement. But, and, and maybe it shouldn't be Saturday, maybe it should be Monday. I, I just think that a system that produces on its good days twenty percent of the registered voters is, needs to be looked at in a very fundamental way. And I think that we, we need to look at, can we facilitate higher participation, number one, just by a more active? Number one, just by a more active and, you know, sort of all-hands-on-deck approach to accommodating parking issues, accommodating childcare issues, all of those things. That's one. Two, I think any kind of, I mean, look, any meeting that goes on for more than three hours is too long. It's just that simple. People can't focus, they can't, and we can't. Even if we're not being asked to do anything, it's very hard to stay engaged for more than two or three hours. So one of the things that I'm thinking about is, should town meeting be a two-day affair if you're going to approach it that way? That's one possibility. I think the question of in the evening versus Saturday is something that we ought to look at. Weekend is something that we ought to look at. But I really do, and then, you know, people have talked to me, well, this one would have done better if it were closer to the front, or if it were in the back. You know, look at how many voters participated, and Ms. Gibbs made the point, at the end of the meeting, there were, you know, less than 400 people there, 350. We, and trying to rearrange the schedule of the articles to accommodate what somebody thinks is going to be the drop-off at a certain point, I really don't think does appropriate service to the effort that goes into presenting the articles that are believed either by petitioners or by this board are believed to be important and needed. And by the way, as well, by the Finance Committee. So I think this needs a, you know, a separate and very substantial and comprehensive look to see if we can't achieve town meetings that bring more people to the meeting who participate throughout, however we accomplish that. So with that, should we just, I, most of these, well, let me say, the list of A through G, Jill, seems to me to be simply a matter of those having been passed, they're being resubmitted in the fashion that we've done in the past. Am I wrong about that?
You're correct. So we do need the select board to vote to authorize the filing. And again, this agenda was posted before town meeting, so we weren't really sure. So like, item H, such as some petition articles, I don't think there's any action items that are needed, but it was placed on the agenda. So for tonight, we do need the board to consider authorizing the town manager to file the legislation for the various articles.
Can we do that as A through G?
I think if you, let's do it separately because I have to provide certified votes.
Okay.
Just want to note a correction on D. It says Article 45, but it's actually Article 47, and that's the home rule petition to establish a real property transfer fee. So just a typo on that.
All right. So then I would invite motions serially on the articles that are listed here.
I'll do the first one. Mr. Chair, I move to authorize the town manager to refile Article 44, Home Rule Petition for Prevailing Wage Exemption.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Article 45?
Go ahead.
You want me to go again?
Go ahead.
I move that we authorize the town manager to refile Home Room Petition to Establish a New Housing Trust, Article 45.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Want me to keep going? I'll keep going if you want me to.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. I move to authorize the town manager to refile Home Room Petition for the Use of Community Preservation Act CPA Funds for Affordable and Attainable Housing, Up to 200% Average Medium Income AMI. That was Article 46 at the town meeting.
Second.
I just want to correct, I mean, I don't know if this has any effect, but it's area median income.
Area, yes.
I mean, that's what's written.
Yeah.
Read it wrong.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize the town manager to refile Home Room Petition to Establish a Real Property Transfer Fee to Fund Affordable and Attainable Housing, which was Article 47 at our recent town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move that we authorize the town manager to, is this a new one? Yes, a new one. To file a new home rule petition to allow associate members of the Conservation Commission the power to vote in the case of absence of, by voting member, which was Article 48 at our annual town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, before you go to the next one, this is the acceptance of the seasonal community designation. I think all we have to do is provide notification to the state. Is that it?
I believe that's all, but if you wanted to vote.
Well, why don't we just say, we will authorize you to do any and all actions necessary and appropriate to.
Thank you.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye, and Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize the town manager to file a new home room petition, include commercial fishermen as a group that can be targeted for affordable attainable housing under seasonal community sections, section of the Affordable Homes Act, which was Article 50 at our annual town meeting.
Second.
Do we need to have 32B in there? I think that's where that comes from, but if, or Article 30, Section 32, Chapter 238, Section 32, I believe.
I'm.
That section is just hanging. I'm just trying to afford that proper reference. Proper.
Okay, and refer to in, okay, refer to in general laws.
Section 32 of the Affordable.
Just add Section 32 of the Affordable Homes Act.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
And Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Okay. Now that, we now go to the memo, the second memo, which addresses the follow-up discussion of citizen petition articles. I think we've already dealt with Article 59. Article 51, we have not dealt with, am I correct? That's a, that's a Thad Eldridge article, 51.
I think that's.
That was in Impact, yes, Impact Chatham. So we need to authorize town manager to take whatever actions are necessary.
Thank you. I don't think I have to take any action. The town clerk will certify the vote, and then if.
Certify to the Attorney General?
To the Attorney General and submit it there. And typically, once that's approved, it just gets inserted into the zoning bylaws or the protective zoning laws.
Okay, okay. And Article 52 did not pass, so I take it we don't need to do anything there? Is that correct?
I believe the only one you might need to take action on would be the last one, Article 59, as that one passed. And I don't know if the board wanted to provide any information on the next steps for that article.
Is that any different from, I mean, that'll be certified by the clerk to the Attorney General? Is that the way it'll be dealt with?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So if anybody wants to comment on it, and Ms. Gibbs, I suspect, wants to have a comment as well, but go ahead, Dean.
Yeah, I wanted to comment on another one, but I'll wait until you finish with 59. I think 55 requires a follow-up internally at the town to set up a committee and get that process in place.
It does?
Yeah, that statute, this is the.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, let's take that up then first. I mean, we'll take them in order. So go ahead.
Yeah, as I recall, I even looked at it recently, but this is Mr. Taylor's petition, petition article that allows for the checkoff box. It's, the statute requires the creation of a committee. It specifies who's on the committee. I think it's the town treasurer, I think it's the town manager on it, maybe. Town treasurer, the chair of the, chair of the Board of Assessors?
Yes.
And maybe a couple of at-large members that the select board would have to choose. I'll have to go back and look at it, but there is a committee.
It's a term.
Is it in here? Yeah.
Should probably be an agenda item, I would think.
Yeah, we should probably do that.
Yeah, I think we should have a staff memo that tells us what it is in light of this that we need to do.
Yep. Okay.
To effectuate the implementation of that.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay? And I take it 58 is certified by the clerk to the Attorney General? Yes?
Yes, because that's a by-law amendment.
Yes, right, okay. So 59. The mechanics are, that also is certified to the Attorney General, but if anybody has a comment, they're welcome to it.
Nope.
Ms. Gibbs, you wanted to address that one?
Yes, thank you. I would ask that town council and the attorney for the airport resist any contact with the Attorney General to attempt to influence the AG decision. I know that that happens on warrant articles where they're trying to encourage it when it's on behalf of the town. While not normally done for citizen petitions, both councils provided 13 pages of opposition opinion that we paid for. Town council spoke at town meeting at the request of Chairman Shell to speak against it, and voters still approved it. I believe it deserves, and voters expect, an independent analysis by the Attorney General with no interference from the town, as it is a citizen's petition and should stand on its own. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
The only thing I would, I understand Ms. Gibbs' comments. I suspect from time to time, just from experience, the Attorney General will reach out to town council, don't they?
Yes, they would reach out directly.
An explanation of what it is. But I understand, you know, what.
I mean, I, yeah, I, this is, this is difficult. I don't, I have no objection, and I'm perfectly happy to have town council decline to advocate any position within any conversation with the Attorney General or MassDOT. But at the same time, number one, he's on the record with a, an opinion in writing that was furnished to us. I would hope that his making that available to the Attorney General, it would not be something that, that would be within the scope of what you're asking. And to the extent that, with respect to any further colloquy, that he simply be available on behalf of the town of Chatham to address any questions or inquiries or other, you know, conversation that is initiated by the Attorney General.
If I could just.
I'm sorry?
If I could just respond to that.
Please.
As looking through the information on the Mass General Sec for Attorney General, normally town council does that when they are in support and they are trying to get approvals for warrant articles, and that's where the town council comes in. They said it's very rare that that would happen with citizen petitions, particularly in light of the fact that he does not agree with the citizen's petition, and that would adversely influence it. I think that we have done that, we have read it, the people have spoken, and I think it would, there's no question, if he went and defended the position that he's opposed to it, that that would have an influence on the Attorney General despite the fact that the, he should be representing the town at town meeting, and town meeting has spoken, and they said they want this to go forward. So I would hope that wouldn't happen. I think it's undue influence, and this has been very controversial, and I think those in opposition have had plenty of opportunity to present their case, and I think the Attorney General is smart enough, but should remain independent and not influenced by the opposition opinion of members, some members of the select board. That the people are, the town meeting are the people who submitted it. It's different. A citizen's petition is totally different than a warrant article that has to be, you know, legally correct. Again, you can hire 10 attorneys and you'll get 10 different opinions. So I would hope that doesn't happen. I think this needs a fair shot. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I haven't read the section that Lane was talking about, but we had a situation long before I was on this board where, I think it had to do with, what do they call those stores that.
Franchises?
Formula, formula.
Formula stores, and I believe the previous town council, Mr. Gilmore advised that that wouldn't fly, and went to the Attorney, it was passed, went to the Attorney General, and I don't know what communications. All I'm, all I was trying to say earlier is, I suspect that the Attorney General, you know, could contact town council and ask, you know, what is this about? And town council can't speak out of both sides of his mouth. He's given his opinion, but his responsibility would be to say, this was voted by town meeting. I suspect these opinions, this one that he gave, and the one that was given by the airport council, and there's a third one that was circulated by somebody on the other side, I suspect those are all going to wind up on the Attorney General's desk because anybody can submit them. People, but I'm not, I don't think the select board should do it. I think, you know, this is going forward to the Attorney General. We can all anticipate how the Attorney General is going to come out on it. If she and her staff want to get more information, they can, but I think I would just leave it at that.
With maybe the following, just that we ask, in light of the controversial nature of the issue, that we ask that the town council be especially diligent in confining his any colloquy to what is professionally appropriate.
I'm totally in agreement with that. And, you know, we, we have a role as select board, notwithstanding what town council, what town meeting passed, to look out for the legal interests of the town. So, you know, that, that's going to come into play depending on what the Attorney General does with this thing. And we'll have to deal with that in the future, but I'm fine with what you just said, Mr. Chairman, and.
Thank you. Thank you.
Like.
Yes, sir.
As am I. I thought was very well said, Dean. You know, I would, I would be, I think it's terribly presumptive to think that the select board can tell the AG who to ask for what kind of information. I think the AG is going to do her due diligence on this issue as it comes before her, and I think it, again, quite presumptive and totally inappropriate to even suggest that we're going to tell the AG what to do. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. I think that, unless anybody has any other comments, I think that concludes the business.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Metters.
Aye.
And Mr. Dyken.
Aye.
And Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell says aye. Mr. Nacastro.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Good night, Chatham.